We will be involved, not as town administrators, obviously. We will be involved in pushing and guiding a lot of these.
Starts with goals and a second level. I think it's consistent with what you're saying. It's objectives, and then there might be a third level or a fourth level.
Yeah.
If we agree that that's the list of our, of our goals that we want to attain in the next year or so, I think that what we're going to want to do is looking at each one of those things and try to establish some process by which we can achieve those goals. And those are going to become things for the town administrator to follow up on. That's the way I agree with you.
Because there are some things that will fall outside of her view. She won't have control over and she shouldn't be evaluated on them.
That's a town.
And I'd like to point out that, in all fairness, I think having ten new things on top of existing goals probably is way too much for us to truly expect to accomplish in one year. I think what we do need to do is pick like a top three. Say we want to work on the others, but some of those we can get done, should get done, and/or need to get done at a higher, at a higher priority than others.
You talked about them being on top of other goals. What are the other ones you think? What is this on top of?
The ongoing stuff.
Ongoing and day-to-day business.
Yeah, there's a lot of ongoing day-to-day business and so on. For me, the town-
There's no other goals that we're talking, there's no other goals underneath this. It's just the operation of the town is necessary.
If these are goals, they're objectives. Yeah, yeah, there's the day-to-day, there's a lot of ongoing work that has to happen.
A lot of work there, absolutely.
And I do think that-
This is above and beyond that.
Right, there is stuff that goes on on a day-to-day basis that has to be done that would take away from town hall employees' ability to work on these things. So we need to be, I think, thoughtful about what really matters to us most. And I'll be honest, I have a tough time because they're all important, but we're not going to get those ten done in one year, no matter how great we think we are.
In all due respect, we suggest before we can rank those, that we need those. So does anybody have any objections, either A, any objections to those goals being the top ten? And/or does anybody have another one that they really want up there that's not up there?
Mark, can I offer, first, I don't think we need ten. I appreciate the medical marijuana, the HCA, but to me, that's kind of in the pipeline. It's a process, be managed, I'm not letting it go. It's coming up, it's on the agenda. As calling that out is a separate piece right now, I think, kind of takes attention away from other things that we perhaps want to really initiate.
Debbie, can you leave the number eight up there, but erase what's in two?
The FY20 town budget, is that any different than what we do every year for a town budget?
Well, I, my, I came up with those words, I was just, my attention for the moment to, to have a, a placeholder for all, all of the most specific items that were related to maintaining real estate taxes, et cetera.
Controlling the budget, controlling the taxes, I think that's, that's, that's the overall.
That's, yeah. Again, we'll have, somebody's going to have the pleasure of telling us what the right titles of these budgets are.
It's something we do every year.
Yeah, so isn't that, in that bucket that says, the ongoing-
Is to control what we do every, to control in the coming year what we haven't been controlling as much in the past year.
But it kind of falls into that bucket of the things that are business as usual that we do every year. It seemed to me what we were putting up there was the over and above.
But different, the point, I think, the reason it's up there is because it's going to be, hopefully, different in the coming year, in that we're going to do things like you're talking about. Maybe not zero-based budgeting, but how do we change about it? I mean, that's, if we can come up with different words, but that's the concept, I think. But if you want a different word than, because it is, every year, we've got to come up with an annual budget. Come up with a different wording, but the concept is not just do the budget again, it's do it better, differently.
So six of ten tied in.
Yeah, I would take out six and call it town operational efficiencies that will have a lot of impact.
Please don't do that, they're really, really different to me.
Okay.
I think there's a core, I think there's a core goal, and that's what Dick's talking about, you know, but there's a core goal. And I'm, I'm okay with this thing about what's above and what's below, but I don't think it needs to be a hundred percent exclusive. I, personally, I don't know how, in good conscience, with everything we've been through in the last couple of years, we can have a list of goals that doesn't have something. And again, I'm not getting hung up on the limit, that topic not being on there, we can work on how.
And see, I feel comfortable that my first one up here, standard and poor's rating, because what we're trying to do is reduce our costs. And that's going to have an effect on cost, depending, if we get a better rating, it'll save us some amount of money every year on our bonds. So I see that as all part of that budget thing.
Were you looking for number six, Mark, to drive toward a particular number that's a little unusual? So like a, a two percent increase, sorry?
No, not at this speed.
So how is six, what are you envisioning, like, that makes six different than what we do every year?
Well, I personally don't think that this is necessarily needs to be what we do every, you know, again, I'm, the five of us, we have the give and take and whatnot. I have no problem with things we do every year being up there, but we want to do it better. Maybe we want to do it as Dick says, in a different way.
Needs a better process.
A rhetorical question, how could the next year's town budget not be a goal, you know, again, subject to our wording and our objectives and all of that, but the topic's got to be that it's, if it's not number one, you're going to get down to that crazy, that's a priority.
Yeah, I think the topic's great, it's more maybe what you were getting to the metrics. What is the outcome of that? What are we driving towards? So we're doing the budget process again.
How do you know you're doing it differently?
Yes. What are we looking for, once we've gone through this process?
Well, I, yeah, I think your, your comment earlier about the fact that, you know, maybe we need to change our budget philosophy, rather than starting from this year and adding our normal two percent of that, or whatever it is. Maybe we ought to change the process by which we ask each department to budget their department. I don't know if you want to start with the zero-based budget, because that might be really difficult for some folks. But maybe we need to talk about the difference in philosophy.
Jimmy Katt is still around, we can bring him over.
No, I, boy, I think that, to me, doing that, and maybe not everywhere, but maybe you pick one class of departments, or you emergency services, or you pick all the guys who move, touch dirt, and so on, and you work on those. And that we do seek to make a change in how we approach that. That, to me, would be an appropriate thing to put under FY20 budget, which would be a, a change in our process and an improvement in our review of expenses. That would speak to Dick's concern, that would speak to a lot of the ones that I have, too. I think just doing the same old, same old, we kind of do that as one of the basic things we do. But I like the idea of incorporating that to indicate that there'll be an, approach it with an intention to push the envelope, see if we can make some changes.
Does anybody find any of the others particularly objectionable? During them, does anybody have anyone that they, that they, real point to them that's not up there?
Can I just ask, number two, financial policies. How does that tie in? Because I'm not that familiar with the college report, and there've been a couple of mention of-
Yeah, one of the things from the college report and from standing in court and whatnot, is that my take on it, we're very, very much into written, organized, if not codified, financial policies. So we started a couple of years ago where there's a, the finance committee does have some that are somewhat succinct. Then there's others that are around, and then there's lots of procedures that aren't reduced to writing into policy and whatnot.
And they issued out a pretty good package, and Kelly, you ought to try to get her a copy of that. Because, you know, it's a quarter-inch thick package.
It was in online.
It probably is.
Yeah, I don't know what we're doing with it.
This goes to a continuation of the process.
It wasn't finalized or two.
And included in it was a five-year capital.
Capital plan.
However, it was two years ago. So it needs to be updated to the current, and then using that will have an effect on six when you look at budgets, what's happening. I mean, that's one of the reasons, the, the objective is not, so, say, the college report, we've got to work on the college report, the objective is to take the tools as they provided them, the information, get it up to date, and, and apply it to this stuff. And we may not agree with, things have changed since they did that. So we may not agree with even something that they said is due for 2020. You have to look at it again and say, well, you know, that's not necessary. It, it may have had the school roofs in it for one and a half million dollars. That's totally out, you know, doing it a different way, whatever. So it has to be everything.
Yeah, so two is the actual policies, and then number three is implementing those and developing the end products, which is the capital plan, laying out what the debt structure is and the timing of it, so that we can use those to see what the impact is to the budget.
Yeah, financial policies is a definition, in my opinion, and the capital plan is a, is a plan. I mean, they laid it out in such a way with timeline and price and everything else.
But specific to facilities and other big purchases.
Yeah. And certainly the members are wrong, because it's two years old now.
Okay, so one more round, because we've got a couple of other things to do today. We're accomplishing a lot. Anybody?
These are not necessarily one-year goals, some of them would be ongoing. It's possible.
Well, again, they, they are one-year goals, which doesn't mean that they can't become twenty-year goals when you do this again next year.
You get them sturdy.
We break it out in pieces, the first, one maybe evaluate and come up with a plan this year, and the following year maybe implement it, something like that.
We need goals for the year.
Right, and typically, my experience in these is you set goals, and then you pick objectives, and you can say, the objective for this year is, or sub-goals, is this, this, and this. So things like town operational efficiencies might be objective for the first year, which is to analyze all the places where there is potential cross-fertilization. And next year's objective might be to propose several other models to do research. Those are the kinds of things, so we kind of break it down. I can't imagine that, frankly, any of these is going to be done, except the TA contract and possibly signed-by-law stuff, done in one year. I think it's going to take a little longer, but we'll get a heck of a start.
Okay, so-
But what about the, since there's an open, seriously, just the discussion, this, this idea that I had of trying to improve our safety from storms. The idea of working with these owners, and maybe we have to go with our own money. Is that it's something that, who else is going to do it if we don't do it? If the selectmen don't provide the leadership, who else would do it? And is it a matter of just, okay, we'll live with the problems as they occur, and sooner or later, yeah, everybody will be up with how powerful, wow, and yeah.
Are you talking public land stick or private? Because I know on Perkins, where I live, it's all private trees, and they all come down and bring down the lines every storm.
So, so the issue is that it would include private property where the trees truly threaten the power. Now, they can be pretty, a hundred feet in that somehow threatens it. That becomes part of the discussion with utilities also.
I have a question.
It's not intended to have-
Isn't that, isn't that part, I think it's an important, I totally agree with that. But isn't that part of the negoti, don't we have periodic, don't we have contracts that we negotiate with them periodically?
No.
Not at all?
But we do need to work with them, but they will work with you. They're very, they're, they are.
It's only, that's only cable, Comcast, and, okay.
It's really, yeah, it's a power company.
Well, we do have a highway department that worries about those things. And we do have a tree ward, and that's what he, one of his jobs is to monitor what needs to come down on public property. He's not, he's not at all interested in doing work on private property.
His responsibility is public ways, trees on a public way, on a public way, yes.
And, you know, that'd be a place to start, would be to talk to him and say, you know-
And then he works for us.
He works for us.
Yeah.
Is that where the bulk of our problems are, the public trees?
The which, the public, oh, I, that's, that's, it was, but, but-
Don't try to bite off-
My suggestion is not necessarily just public, as I say, if there wants-
Because all the homes that are around right near the, I'm even thinking of Howlett. They're all private property, but they're all the trees that are about their problem.
Let's start with the public trees to start with, don't bite off too big a chunk.
No, I mean, if we're looking at the issue, though, we should look at where the problems are occurring.
And so this is, this, this would be that kind of, what's the scope of it? What's the cost of it? What would the utilities consider? How do they do it? You know, how far in are you going to consider a tree as a threat to the lines? It's a greater threat, I assume, when it's closer than if it's further away. But the issue is, it's, we're just different than we were fifty years ago. It really is just different, primarily in the area of the pines. Pines grow, and there's a certain point at which they really get pretty big and are a problem. Any developer that comes in is going to build on a piece of property, or pull out all the old pines, because he knows he's not going to do that to a, a new homeowner. He's got to clear the land, whatever, else he pulls out all the trees, because they're, they're a threat and it's a problem. So that's the time to do it, when he's got everybody there, and he's got no house in place, and you get it out of there. It's just something that's happening within the town that is creeping up on us.
Is your interest only relevant to trees, or would it also expand to like, how quickly they send crews in a storm, or how they prioritize tops, building, that stuff?
Well, you can get into those discussions with them. They have really stepped up a whole lot in recent years, as, everybody got their messages, right? And they just open the storm centers and things like that, they're watching what they're doing. So we can get into discussions with them, and, and I have called them in. We had a, we had a highway department, they had storms, I called them in and generated a, you know, what are you going to do that the next time? But that's not what this is, this is more the long-term. My thought on that was more the, it's not something that will fix tomorrow. If you threw a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars at it, a million dollars at it, it wouldn't fix tomorrow. It just, it takes time to get to these things and get them out, and which are the ones you're going to do, et cetera.
Did you want to sneak out behind here? Didn't see him leaving.
He grew weary of the trees.
He left his, he left his materials on, seriously.
There was Kelly that asked if she could leave. Up to everybody whether or not they want to leave at nine, or put something about utilities entries in there.
Could I make one suggestion that might help consolidate some of them? The three things that I see up there that have a common thread are the budget, financial policies, capital plan, and to some extent the downtown, because the reason we're focusing on the downtown is that we're hoping to attract people to the town, want them to stay here and increase our tax base. But even if you keep that separate, if you were to say an overall, an over, an overarching goal is to enhance or ensure, or to strengthen the town's financial condition and stability, within that overarching goal, you could have a number of objectives, which is, in order to do, so the task would be, or the vision would be, that we get a triple-A rating from standard and poor's, which is going to help with our taxes. But the overarching goal is to ensure the financial stability or to ensure the financial management of the, of the town. And one objective is update the, to finalize the financial policies, because they're already in draft form. I just need to get it to you folks, and you guys need to look at them and prioritize that, and give me your feedback so I can finalize them, and I can also do that with the FinCon. That would be one of my goals, is to take your final version of the policies and to make sure that that makes it through the process to an end result. So that then turns into a, a goal for me. So the overarching goal is financial management or strengthening our financial condition. Objective number one, or task or objective, finalizing the financial policies that are going to help to guide us. And then the second objective is to update the capital plan. I've already started working on that, that's just a matter of prioritizing it and saying, and having this board say, okay, your job is to get that to us. And I do that, that becomes one of my tasks. And then the third thing is, of course, the town budget. Doing, I'm already doing the process, I'm already overseeing the process, but one of the objectives is that we would have an FY20 town budget process that is efficient and effective and allows for the board of selectmen to give their policy preferences and for citizens to have input, and for, you know, there to be efficiencies with all the boards and throughout the town. So I see financial management or financial, strengthening the financial condition of the town as your goal. That's your aim, that's your goal, and underneath that comes three of those projects that are already on there. And now you've taken four goals or three goals and combined them into one, which is focus on the big picture.
So please, I'm ju, I'm just going to ask you to hold that thought until later in our process. Because that's where we're going.
Have to get that off my mind.
But, but there's no way we're going to author this creatively and get to objectives today. So for, just for step one. So what I think is on the table at the moment, and we just stepped out, is whether or not we have nine goals, or Mr. Gant's suggestion is that we fill in number eight with the issue about trees and utilities. So, so, you know, I'm not taking votes on this level, but what's the sense of your name, it's up to people.
I want to say, based on the thing that came through here, and the overarching, one of the biggest ones up there is probably this town IT thing, because there are, in your case, a number of items listed, you had a number of items listed, I haven't been on the different things. So the, the elephant up there to deal with as far as, somewhere between the website and the town IT. And the town IT runs to efficiencies, that's, we're trying to-
So nobody disagrees?
We're trying to catch up with things.
Nobody disagrees with that, that's up there.
But if I look at how big something is that's up there.
Okay, so unless others have a strong, I, I don't think your tree's made it to the list.
It's fine, that's fine.
All right, so, so-
I, I agree with his IT thing, because it's, it's a big problem in becoming bigger.
That's the overarching one, the overarching one, that's the one.
Our vulnerability, Cricot.
Debbie, do you have those down? I noticed someone was astute enough to take a picture.
Yep, I have it.
Okay. My next question to you guys is, do we want to rank them or not? I'm finding it a way.
It's take a long time to rank them, do we need to?
Nope. Okay, fine, all right, so-
We will, probably, in the long run.
We'll have to for resources.
Yeah, but not tonight.
So the question is next steps. So unless someone else really wants to do this, and it's also, it's clear in our, in the base document, which is the contract I'm working from, that Kelly needs to be involved. I would be happy to sit down with Kelly and try and come up with financial wording and organize the nine and start with proposed objectives, just as a working document to bring back.
And may I suggest that if we're not going to rank them, that we bullet some other numbers, because folks will interpret numbers as an implied prioritization.
And if I could just add one thing, I like Kelly's idea of clustering, and I think the financial policies and the capital plan go together. But the discussion of the FY20 town budget from a process perspective, I think is, is a separate animal from trying to look at the budget with new eyes and from the operational efficiencies. So I, I wouldn't be looking at process so much to make sure the, the process of putting the budget together is efficient. That's absolutely necessary. But the important point, I think, is to get at how we put the budget together from efficiency, synergy, outsourcing, it's, it's looking at the budget from a new perspective to see if we can get the numbers down or control them going forward.
Which may have nothing to do with process.
Nothing to do with process.
Yes, nothing to do with, so that, this is, this is good discussion, because the board's up there, different people can take the same first. I'm going to, I'm going to offer a thought in the wording of what that is, and go back to control increases in real estate taxes.
Okay, so at our next work session, when we bring the proposed goals and objectives, then that will be the perfect time to do that.
What I'm saying is, because of this discussion-
I'm not going to get into the wording, that's, but I just said, please. Kelly and I will work on proposed wording, some started objectives, these are all the goals, and then you'll do as you wish.
And you have all these things that everybody put in, so you have a lot of work to work on there.
And again, I want to emphasize, if anybody is concerned with this kind of thing, that those were not distributed to members beforehand, they were distributed at this meeting.
And the reason being, which anybody listening would say, that's crazy, why wouldn't you? And that has to do with apparently, the thing that you talked about at the beginning, the SJC's most recent thing, that's the one, the open meeting one, a lot of what is-
Right, which has to do with, and I am humbly just exerting, open meeting law's exemption to the definition of deliberation, which became effective July 2010, that prevents members of public bodies to distribute to each other reports or documents that may be discussed at a meeting, provided that no opinion of a member is expressed. So we're trying very, very acutely to stay, to conform with those requirements.
Well, we all did this independently.
Yeah, but we didn't express any opinion.
That is an opinion, that is.
Your priority is an opinion, absolutely.
There was no priority, I mean-
No, no, those are, those are, yeah, those are the goals.
Those are opinions.
Anyway, we erred on the side of caution at worst. So do we currently-
Erred on the side of caution, go with that.
I think it's very clear those are opinions. That's my opinion of the tip at the time caution. Do we currently have another working session scheduled?
I think so.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Every month from now on out, I think.
If you went to the next one.
It's on the calendar.
They sort of-
So it's in between, so you have August, so it'll be here. So like the sixteenth, the sixteenth of them?
It is the sixteenth.
So unless something comes up, so we're talking about August 16th, Thursday at 3:00 PM. Is everybody comfortable with?
Debbie won't be here.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, so, so at that time, Kelly and I will, will have a, again, have this progressed to hopefully up closer, in terms of what the actual titles of the goals will be, any possible consolidations, that's the start at some point.
And we're back to Thursday again, right? That's a Thursday.
Yep.
This one, this is different.
Thank you, and I appreciate your tolerating my attempts to just, they just wanted us to stay at a certain level and make some progress. We have two other items, we have two committees to form, and so I wanted to talk about the process for that. The first is the taxation aid committee for seniors and disabled. And somewhere in our packet, Debbie was kind enough to give us the required appointments. Will you find that? Thank you. Okay, so there isn't a lot of creativity on this, I don't think. It's just a bit, okay, so, so number one person is the chairman of the board of assessors. Number two person is the town treasurer, and then three residents appointed by the board of selectmen. So we need, not necessarily at this moment, but we need to come up with three residents who are interested on that. Now, this is not veterans, are the veterans one separate?
No, that's a separate one, a different process altogether.
Okay, so anybody have any, well, let me ask this, does any member want to volunteer to be the coordinator of finding three volunteers?
I wanted to, after our conversation today, I just wanted to be able to get all the information up on the website, including the, the application. I stopped halfway through doing that because the charter review committee, which we're going to talk about next, there were some questions in my mind about that. But I just wanted to let you know that I haven't actively solicited folks, but once I put that on the news section of the website, I can do that today. What I might do is send you a link, and then maybe if you could each think of some folks you might want to send it to, and say, hey, would you consider serving on this? Would you be interested with a copy of the application form? In that way, you can each sort of individually approach any folks that you think might be interested in. And doing it, I'll just set a deadline, so that we can try to get folks to respond by a certain date, so that by the next meeting, well, not this next one, the following one, we can then consider everybody who's put their name in the hat. So that would be my suggestion, is that maybe they'll just send you the link.
As you volunteering to coordinate, that's when you come up with three, three interested qualified people.
Maybe each of us simply find somebody.
So like Kelly?
Sure.
Go out the phone.
Yep. Okay, the government, my words, government review committee, I think we have to be careful about the word charter. And this, you know, that's how the vote was taken, I'm a little concerned about that being missing. But at any rate, I believe to date we have two volunteers, is that correct?
I only got one, Mark said he got one.
I believe Mr. Goodu was our, our first volunteer.
Oh.
He didn't write it. You must not have been at that meeting when we volunteered you.
No, I didn't. But I didn't fill out an application because I made it so long ago. I figured I'd grant, I'd, yeah.
Definitely older than that.
Hey. I have a town book, you know, I told you.
Well, that's what I was just going to suggest. We had the previous committee, and I don't know if, where you want to begin. If we begin with zero-based committee building, we pretend that a committee never existed, and we just come up with our, with our numbers. However, if the government review committee from how many years ago, if that structure worked, or there was something about that process that you liked, I need to, have to start from scratch. I don't know how many people we're looking for, I don't know if we have a subsection of folks that we're looking for. And perhaps, Boyd, you might have some history on that. And perhaps Boyd, you might have some history on that. But that's sort of where I, sort of left it because I wasn't even sure how many people we would need and if there's a cross-section and how we would go about doing that. I did include in the packet information from the last government review committee. And I also, I don't know if it was in your packet, but I'll be sure to get it to you, is a copy of the letter by which when the town, ten years ago, was two thousand and nine, when town meeting voted to establish the town administrative position, the attorney general's decision, it was case four one nine five, gave a letter of response to the town, actually, it was June thirteenth of two thousand and seven that this is dated. And there were a number of comments in there that certainly might be topics for conversation with this committee. So I was including that only because it does bring up some issues that may need further clarification by this committee now that it's been more than ten years since the town administrator role was created. So there's some pieces of information in there. But going back to my initial question, do you have any, was there seven members at the last committee?
I believe there were seven, and I could name several of them, but not all of them. So I, I need you to go back through.
Right here, we talked about the government review committee. Janice Ablam, George Anderson, Boyd Jackson, Holger Leether, and Alan Wallace. That's five of the non-employees, if there were any others. But this was what was listed here.
This is based on, so I have this in my files, but there's a note here right above where it says the committee members are. It says, the Board of Selectmen appointed an ad hoc committee in two thousand and eleven to take a closer look at the present form of government. And that was the one in two thousand and eleven. But there's also one that references two thousand and four T M C. So I don't know if that's the same.
I think the Board going from three to five and hiring Jenna, did that emanate from a committee?
Yes, three, five, yeah. So it sounds like there's been multiple generations. I guess before we created from scratch, I was just wondering, should we replicate this one on and on?
I'm almost certain Steve Clark was one of them.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the, the one before Jenna. But I think the Holger one was the last one, wasn't it?
Right, that's the one that.
Yes. There's more powers on that one?
No.
There are two different, two different write-ups here. And I'm not sure which one the committee was charged with and what our, seemed to be committee is going to be charged with. If you look on the first page, the charter committee, the objectives, they're evaluating everything under the sun. Best practices, how to improve efficiencies with regional compacts, IT developments, outsourcing. It's everything under the sun. Then you go to page three and it says to just take a look at the present form of government and formulate recommendations for changes in the current structure of the town's administration. So they sound like two very different animals. Are we more on page three? Is that what this new committee is being asked to do?
We need to rewrite page one to focus in on the particular issues, my feeling.
Which is, is our issue on page three? If you go into the third page where it says introduction?
Yes, town administration. And I personally think that in our charter, we ought to mention that specific issue in mind is the, specifically looking at weak town administrator versus strong town administrator.
Yeah, just so it doesn't have scope.
Yeah, that's, there may be other things that come up and so on, but I think we need to provide the charter. Frankly, the charter not only empowers them to look at that, but by saying this is what you do and there are virtual fences beyond that, which case we're not expecting them to go. This is a huge thing. Rather than see one or two things done well and lots of things kind of.
So you're saying you like page three, but?
Yeah, I don't think is, I'm not sure page three is, has all the specifics, but page three is closer, yes.
Closer, yeah, that hurt, I didn't say.
Yeah, but it is, it is closer. It just needs to talk about strong town administrator, weak town administrator, as is in some of the following documentation there and so on. But that, to me, seems to be the charter that we should set up. And that's what the voters asked for, and that's.
Well, that's, I was referring, I think you have a copy of the actual warrant article that was passed. So I think that would be the first step is really just to, so it's basically to see if the town would order the Board of Selectmen to appoint a charter revision committee. So if you decide as the Board to change the name of that, you can do that. And maybe we can formulate, what's the title? What's the essential purpose? And what's the basic makeup of the committee? And what's their major charge? According to this warrant article, the citizen petition, that it would be to review the town's present form of government, that would be the first action item. Two would be to make recommendations about the creation, well, it says creation of the position of a strong town administrator, but you could argue that that wording is, should be changed. So I would say that regarding the position of the town administrator role to coordinate activities of town departments. And three, to submit a written report on their findings and recommendations. So that gives you the input.
I think it's great.
Simplify this and just stay with that.
I like this, I like this.
Where are you reading from?
This is the article.
The warrant.
It's a one-page.
The citizen petition.
Yeah, the warrant.
So we can sort of tweak that a little bit so that it might better reflect the Board's intent based on the direction of the situation.
There's a lot to study here, in my opinion. And I suggest that we put this on the agenda for our next working session.
Can we by any chance settle on, you know, and we even do like the name and the amount of people around?
I think we should.
Yeah. So we can get the names.
We don't have to do the.
We don't have to get into detail, but yeah, how many, only one.
Can you just, actually, number, number two is very clear, strong or weak. That's the decision they're making for town administrator here.
I, I would prep, I would, I would comment that that terminology might not be the most appropriate because I think that there was some confusion about the strong chief, the fire chief versus the, I don't think there's anything such as a strong or a weak.
It's the level of responsibility and authority is the issue.
Either manager or administrator and under what.
But what's number one? What is the options we're looking at? Reviewing the town's present form of government, what's?
That might be, you know, the five, selectmen, the town administrators, the town manager. It could even be the Department of Public Works issue that came up before. It was passed at town meeting, but then it didn't pass at the poll. Maybe that question has to be revisited.
Go back to three selectmen, now it's all the law.
Unless they're in, unless they're all together, they're trying to town business.
Thank God, who gets to get out and ask?
Short straws or close the door.
When the town said no? But I mean, that was ten years ago, so I would suspect that it would be within the purview of this committee to discuss that again, is it something worth revisiting or not?
I want to point out the language here, which I think is helpful. It says, review the town's present form of government and to make recommendations. So obviously, making a recommendation of the role of the town administrator needs to be done in the context of overall town government efficiency and effectiveness. So I'm comfortable with this language. I could see saying sort of regarding the creation or the, maybe that one sentence can make a little adjustment if you don't want to put the word strong town administrator in there. But I think this captures it. And frankly, given the fact of what people voted on, the closer the better. I think we need to do that.
You'd use the word development instead of recreation, regarding the development of the position or implementation.
Is it to?
Evolution or?
If we were to say the role of the town administrator or the responsibilities, like strong and weak isn't the right terminology, pretty general.
Okay, so it's not, it's not like a town. I was under the misguided impression that those, that was defined, those are defined terms.
No. And if you read this case.
It's just the manager or the administrator.
You read that attorney general letter, it gets to the heart of that question. Because I consider myself to have the authority of a strong town administrator personally. And what gets me frazzled sometimes is the fact that my job description says I should do one thing, which is a strong town administrator. But my authority under twenty-three A says I'm a weak town administrator and I'm following the Board's direction. So I'm constantly in this teeter-totter mode.
Kelly, can I suggest that, that first of all, would be a great conversation for this commission to talk with you about. I'm gonna ask whether the following wording, taking your idea, this is for number two, to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen regarding the roles and responsibilities of a town administrator to coordinate the activities of town departments.
I would just say the instead of A.
The, that's a good point. But I think that that makes it clear, we know what we want.
I think that would be perfect.
And I guess the question is, to coordinate activities at town departments, is, is that restricting or is that?
Don't I think that's general enough, I think, but that's just my opinion.
Yep, okay, I'm.
Or delete it.
Or delete it.
Yeah, that, that could have been a whole over from the old D P.
It could be easily deleted, it's the same.
I would kind of delete that because I think we want to take a look. And this is going to be tremendously helpful in terms of determining, you know, if we set up this performance review system for this year, this could end up pointing to this in the future, but it's out there away. I'm inclined to delete the, to coordinate the activities of town departments.
I think it's an unnecessary prepositional phrase because the other, the other issue that they'll have to discuss is the overall governance, which is that I don't have supervisory responsibility over highway, the highway superintendent, park superintendent, or water. So I think it leaves it a little more vague, which I think would be good.
Well, I, I think the commission will be in touch with us and so on and so forth. And frankly, if we pick people who are good, they're smart, they have the town's interests in mind, and I trust them to look at the big picture, be in touch with us. And, you know, I think that, this is the people's town, not just the selectmen's town, so I have confidence.
So wording in here now says regarding the roles and responsibility of the position of the strong town administrator.
I changed that.
Take the word strong.
Of the town administrator, period, to not do anything?
Regarding the roles and responsibility of, take out the position of.
Of the.
Of, of the.
The town administrator.
And then that, that's it.
Period.
That's it.
So they're gonna make recommendations concerning roles and responsibilities, period.
And they will undoubtedly refer to state law on the different definitions and so on. I hope bring some of the conflicts of the current structure to the fore and make a decision based upon that.
So do you wanna, do you wanna set a number? Or do we wanna parallel the last committee process and have everything funneled to Kelly? Then we can see how many candidates we have and then decide if, I presume it's gonna be the five or seven, but.
Yeah, I'd like to see five.
Number aside, it just dawned on me that it might be better to funnel everything to our executive assistant because I don't want there to be any appearance that I have any, even though it's very.
That's a good point.
I just want to avoid any potential conflict.
I like this idea of five to seven. Can I, can I just suggestion, so, why don't we start with five and you can always change it to seven? You can start with seven and change it to five, but that's a little bit more awkward.
It's a little bit like changing jury members in the middle.
Just to get, just to get an idea of what we're, I, I would go along with five to seven as our position at this point. That's good enough with me too. But I think that's kind of like the size of a work.
No, no, but we don't want to, we don't, I don't think we want to establish it and then in the middle of the process.
Yeah, you can.
That's, that's subject to all kinds of interpretation. It's like stacking the jury.
Could we agree with this? Could we agree with this? Something between either five or seven?
Yeah, it has to be an odd number.
I think, I think five or seven, and if there are a dozen candidates, then perhaps allow people who want to be involved, we go to seven. If we're struggling to get folks to say five. But I think saying five or seven right now is sufficient to.
Why can't it be six? I mean, the library.
Because anytime you have to vote online, you've got to have a tiebreaker.
I'm just setting up, that's like, every, I always want a formal corporation fifty-fifty and then they get divorced, then we play.
So five or seven?
Yeah, five or seven, okay. And so the name, again, my only two cents is to not have the word charter in there. One of the possibilities would have it to be the sequel, Government Review Committee Rule Number Two or something. The trouble, I guess I do have one other thought. The word revision really applies to charter and I don't, it shouldn't innately imply that there has to be changes.
So about Government Review Committee FY nineteen.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then we know exactly when it is.
Yeah. Anybody?
The only challenge is, I mean, this is, this is the warrant article. I assume the, the recommendation we voted was essentially the same. I don't have a text and phone.
It is, I don't think it is any substantive.
I don't see something to change at all.
All right, so the formation of the two committees.
It will be this next meeting. The following meeting is August second, is it August second, service?
I don't think this, this goes to a working session. I think this goes to a revision.
Yes.
At the next session. So whatever the meeting, after the upcoming.
August sixth is the next meeting.
So this is the same way that it'll come to us and we'll forward to people? Is that how this is advertised?
You've got ten to send them all to Debbie. I mean, anybody that's.
Okay, but are you sending something revised?
Yes, I'm just gonna put something on the web as a news announcement and I'll forward that to everyone so that you can, or at least soliciting potential interested committee members.
That was a recommendation. The challenge we have is that it's a half a charter revision committee. It says to appoint a, maybe you couldn't say a, a charter revision committee.
But new information has come to us and since then.
I, I agree, it's awkward.
I think, to me, we're within the spirit.
I think we're in spirit.
I agree, I agree.
Motion to, oh, you came back to the jury, that's.
I was looking at the.
To a second, it's unanimous, thank you all.
Thank you.
Debbie, just stand there, please. I assume we got this all recorded.
Yep, I do.